The Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for April the 4th, 2022. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I'll be doing the invocation and I'd recognize Commissioner Marty Pennell for our pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Father, we thank you for the day to come back and here to for a meeting. We pray that you guide and direct all of our thoughts, give us wisdom as we make decisions that move Alexander County forward. Or I pray that you give wisdom to those that are here, help us to be an example, a light to the county where as we move forward, help us to do things that would move Alexander County forward. Thank you for each person that came out tonight. Pray that you give us a safe journey back to our homes. Pray for all of our emergency services, our sheriff's department, police, highway patrol, fire departments, they protect us each day. And you know what we need most of all. We thank you for the good things you do for us each day. We know where blessings come from. Ask all this in thy name. Amen.
If you would, direct your attention to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a special recognition tonight, but I've been approached a couple of times. There's a, I think there's some kind of little ball game or something going on. So, you know, everybody's ready to get home to watch that. So, we'll try to move along as quickly as possible. But at this time, I'd like to recognize someone in our county who's always on the scene and has been in the county doing things for a long time. Tonight, we really don't need an introduction, but I'd like to invite Mr. Lee Sharp to come forward as the commissioners are going to present a key to the county to him. I think everyone knows Lee, he's longtime publisher of the Teller's Times. He does the excellent job of keeping everybody informed and keeping us up to date with what's going on. He's done it throughout the years. We're presenting this key in recognition of Lee's 80th birthday this month, as well as to just observe the 100th anniversary, you know, for the Teller's Times. And, you know, Lee, we thank you for what you do for the newspaper, but also for the community and what you've done, you know, for people, for all of us as we grew up, you know, you were there giving the information, being present and being involved in things. And that's what it takes. If you'd come up to the podium and maybe have a photo off if some of your family wants to come up. I'll read, it says, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Walter Lee Sharp in recognition of many years of outstanding service and dedication to Alexander County, presented April the 4th, 2022. Lee, we appreciate it."
Thank you.
You got it.
It's okay, go ahead, tell him.
He bossed him around.
He bossed him around a little bit.
One, two, three. Okay, one more. Two, three.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me share a few thoughts.
Maybe it'd be better if I talk first, Ronnie, what do you think?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, let me talk first, please. Can I do that?
I guess I was appointed to be the spokesperson for all these people that are out here, Lee, and all the people of Alexander County. And it's a great honor to do that. I'd like to say a special thank you to Ray Warren for helping with this particular project, as well as Gary Herman. Walter Lee Sharp, owner and publisher of the Teller's Times in Alexander County as a servant leader. For the past 70 years, he's gone about providing empathy, encouragement, leadership to the continued improvement of Alexander County. He has little interest in self-promotion. He prefers to deflect his leadership impact to the work of others and business, his churches, community in Alexander County. You know, so many people do things because it feels good or because of what others might say. Lee is one of those that believes that his leadership is helped by how others go in concert with him there. And he feels that that magnifies and brings endless opportunities for Alexander County. Family's always been important for Lee. He speaks lovingly of his now deceased wife, his sons, and the servant heritage that was taught to him by his parents, Conway and Irene Sharp. He started when he was 10 years old at the Teller's Times, sweeping the floor and folding newspapers and running a few errands. And, you know, he's been that for how many years now, Lee? 70 years?
He was close to 70 when I started, 10.
Yeah, yeah. So, you'll be turning 80 this week, is that right?
On Saturday.
On Saturday? And everybody said?
Happy birthday.
Birthday. You know, he, give a little background there on him. You know, he's helped a lot of different things in terms of the Chamber of Commerce and civic clubs and all those kinds of things. You were born in 1942. And you came out of Hidnot High School and you went to Lenora Ryan College and you found this person named Jane Fox in 1964 that became your spouse. And I'd be remiss if I didn't describe Jane. Jane was a servant leader in her own right as she supported Lee and his endeavors. Lee would agree that his successes were made possible through the many sacrifices of Jane. He has two sons, Wesley and John, that were born to Lee and Jane. He has two grandchildren, Evan and Taylor. They lighten and enrich your life, I'm sure, nothing like grandchildren. Lee has just turned 22 years old when he became publisher of the Teller's Times. Think about that. 22 years old when he became the publisher there. And we know that just six months ago, he'd lost his loving wife through the outcome of a fall. He operated the Teller's Times, he's done all kinds of additions, the bicentennial edition, a 100-year anniversary of the Times, the launch of the Bethlehem Star, which I've had great interest in, in the Bethlehem community there. He's changed the Teller's Times. He went from line of type, computers, computer to film, and now computers to printing. And one of the things that's always been the metro of the Teller's Times, he wants to share the successes of everyone in Alexander County. You know, whether it be a business, whether it be schools or individuals, you know, he's done things with Hidnot Celebration of the Arts, he's done things with the county school system. Matter of fact, the schools, we see Alexander Central sitting out that way, right? Alexander Central sitting there. This man sitting here had great impact in terms of talking with the Division of School Planning and helping with the school bond referendum that made it possible for Alexander Central to exist there. In the 70s, I had a lot of fun working with Lee on a school bond. It failed about four to one.
Big time.
Big time, two and a half to one. And with Lee's guidance, we went from a failure to a positive. And Lee made that possible by helping a rookie like me, and I can say, since I'm standing up here, I can say that, and all the other people to create a sense of need for a positive education in Alexander County. He worked with CBCC, he worked with the PTAs with his son's schools. He was also a little league coach, I think basketball and baseball. And he didn't do football.
No, didn't do football.
Didn't do football. And they had a lot of fun. Church was really important. He went to Hidnot United Methodist Church where he was a late leader, a Sunday school teacher, council chairperson, finance. And here's what someone said about you, Lee, one of your church members. Lee goes quietly about a task and no one knows he does it. He doesn't ask for any fanfare and the positive things that he does. He worked with the civic clubs, the Chamber of Commerce, the recreation. Anybody ever play on that plane that was out at JC Park? Anybody in here? Well, he was instrumental in getting it there. He was, he was one of the leaders in the Teller's JC's. He received, he was a president, vice president, state director. He got the distinguished service award. He got involved with the Alexander County Chamber of Commerce, which he worked with for 25 years, probably holding every office up through the president. In 1984, he was named the Alexander County Citizen of the Year. We talked about his involvement with sports there, but he also was involved in many other ways. East Alexander Park, anyone in here ever played at East Alexander Park? This young man, almost 80, had great impact in that coming about. Bethlehem Park, we had a huge debt that we needed to pay. And working with Lee, we developed a plan so that that could be paid off. I remember walking through the cow pasture and stepping in a cow paddy with Lee at the new Bethlehem school, looking at the possibilities of what could be done to give some flat land there. And Lee.
You touched the track, didn't you?
Yeah, we did. We absolutely did. And, you know, some of the other things, the sesquiquintennial celebration, Alexander County Christmas Parade, Ms. Alexander County, he was a leader of that. The hospital, you know, Lee understood about healthcare in Alexander County. He was involved with Alexander County Citizens for Expanded Healthcare. He was president of Alexander Cares. He served 14 years on the board of the Alexander County Hospital. He did a lot of other things that helped the hospital come about, but unfortunately, because of finance, just like in other places, that Alexander County Hospital went away in the 21st century. Not anything that Lee did, it was just a matter of circumstances there. But he continued to bring doctors to Alexander County. Lee, thank you for that. State and regional committees, NC 2000 Committee, North Carolina 400th Anniversary, Boy Scouts, something that's dear to my heart. And he received a North Carolina Governor's Award for Outstanding Volunteer Service. He's probably the best historian that's ever been in Alexander County in terms of the victorial history of Alexander County. He received a Barrier Award of Excellence from the North Carolina Society of Historians for the Golden Anniversary of the Hidnot High School. Alexander County Treasures, which we see is available there in 2012, 368 pages, probably the best thing that had been printed since 1925 with the White Book. And Lee, I thank you for that, being an amateur historian, many, many very positive things about Alexander County. They received a Peace Award for that, by the way. Now, in summary, you know, how do you summarize someone like Lee? You know, he doesn't like to be bragged on, but here's what I think's most important. Lee Sharp is one of those special people who understands that community improvement comes by the efforts of people. He emulates many of the characteristics learned from his parents, that individuals have a God-given intelligence and should use it wisely. Lee exhibits a quiet, gentle manner, which shows his love of family, God, and community. He believes that God has blessed him during life's journey. He deflects personal recognitions, preferring to tell how people have been gracious in sharing their love, knowledge, and time. A few special people show up in our lives who bring about change through empathy, encouragement, and servant leadership in our community. Alexander County is a better place because of our friend, Lee Sharp. It is my sincere pleasure to ask Mr. Lee Sharp to come forward to receive the Order of the Longleaf Pine, the highest volunteer award in the state of North Carolina. Ronnie Reeves, would you do it?
The key to the county, that was good, but this is what we really talk about here. I guess. Dr. Warren Holler, he come up with the information that gets a good thing. It says, "State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper Government, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and seal, zeal of Walter Lee Sharp. The Order of the Longleaf Pine," and it's given on April the 4th, 2022. I'm sure you'll cherish that and everything that you've done. You've helped the county tremendously, just as we've heard a few things, it's been covered a lot more than that. And if anyone else wants to come up for a picture of any of your family, we'll take this one.
Okay. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Amy?
Get that family up here.
Maybe Dr. Holler or something.
Yes. I'm Paul, if you will, family.
Would you like a picture of all of the community?
If you, Ronnie, I think we need to get Dr. Holler up here also with him. When we do the commissioners or whatever. Thank you.
And probably Ray.
Yeah. Tim.
Would you rather pull him over here and us get out of the way?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Don't be on that side.
There we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
I didn't do anything to get this award. Why am I getting it? Do it over here. Like that.
Larry was just really excited it was still a secret.
I was.
So, you really didn't know? Did you have the idea?
What was it?
They did a good job keeping it.
I think I said today it was about, this is about as big a secret as Vanilla Ice.
For Alexander County, they did a good job.
I would, but there's a podium in my way.
One, two, three. And over here on three. One, two, three. I need one more.
One more.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. Thank you, family, friends, extended family, civic family. I'm very honored to have had the opportunity to spend almost fourscore years in Alexander County. I would share with you that some of the things that Dr. Holler has already mentioned, that family's extremely important. And I am very thankful for the family that I have and the opportunities that have been afforded to me. Graduated from Lenora Ryan in 1964, came back home, was very happy and thankful to have the opportunity to have a vocation here in my native county. And Jane and I were very delighted and grateful to be able to pursue our vocations and to raise our family here. The Pastors are green in Alexander County, the place that I relish as home, so I share that with you. The First County Commissioner meeting that I attended was in 1964. The commissioners were Howard Whitner, Howard Norton, and Turner Walker. Mr. French, I think, will appreciate this. The tax rate was a dollar per hundred valuation. The total valuation of property in the county was 31 million. We're two and a half billion now, is that correct, or thereabouts? The county budget was $353,603.40. To put that in perspective, the current county budget of almost 46 million is 130 times larger than that. But I will share with you, it is 130 times or more complex than that budget was back then. And during the 58 years that I've been covering some of the events in the county, more than 40 individuals have served as county commissioners. And I believe they have served the county well. I will share with you that I believe few people realize the job that you have to do. They don't appreciate the time and effort and commitment that it takes to be a knowledgeable and viable county commissioners. So, I say, "Thank you, commissioners, for your commitment and your service to Alexander I'm thankful for, you know, the opportunity to work with many clubs, boards, organizations. And I'm also very thankful for the newspaper staff that has helped us document the history of Alexander County on a week-by-week basis. I have been very blessed during this venture in Alexander County for more than a half century. And I'll simply conclude by saying this native son looks forward to tomorrow and a continuing involvement with the remarkable people of Alexander County. Thank you.
Your job well done, couldn't go to a better person than my eyes. And we're getting ready to continue with our regular meeting, but anyone who wants to stay to talk to Lee, room 118 is available if you want to, you know, go to there. And we really appreciate it. And it's been an honor to recognize you. Thank everyone that's come out.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion for the adoption of agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on the agenda? If not, raised hand, entertain a motion. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. This time, item number one is public comment. And I think we have one person who has signed up. And I'll just read the guidelines for that. Public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It's not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select one spokesperson if there's a group. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individual members. Citizens will be civil and courteous and limit comments to topics of public concern. And topics may require further investigation. County officials may be scheduled for a future agenda. And any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. And we have Natasha Anderson, KeyPro Outreach Services, if you'll come forward.
Hello? How are you?
Good.
So, as you stated, my name is Natasha Anderson. I'm here with, the organization is KeyPro, and that stands for Keystone Peer Review Organization. I'm here with my team, as well as my supervisor, Veronica, Katie, and Latoya. We have been doing outreach in Alexander County for those who have been impacted by COVID. Basically, it's like marginalized populations. And so, we have just been out here trying to reach those who have been impacted by COVID so that we can try to assist them through any crisis that they are experiencing, whether it be rental payment assistance or utility payment assistance, or if they have some type of food insecurity. And I spoke with Ms. Jamie last week when I signed up to come here. And so, I just wanted to let all of you know, you know, we're just trying to get the word out in Alexander County for those who need assistance. Katie, she goes to the senior center, and I'm at the mobile cafe on Main Avenue every Tuesday and Thursday. So, if you know anyone who needs some assistance, or if you know of any ideas that can help us and my team, that would be great. And again, just thank you for letting me to come up here and speak with you all. You all have a good evening.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number two, public hearing for approval of road name, Sunny Vista Drive. I'd recognize Mr. Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to open public hearing for the approval of road name. Have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. We're in the public hearing now? Thank you, gentlemen. Continue, Mr. French.
Thank you. Staff request the approval of the following road name is listed below. The name meets regulations as required. The road name being recommended is Sunny Vista Drive and it's off of Bolling Lane.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this road name? Any commissioners have a question? Being none, we need to close the public hearing. I make a motion that we close public hearing for approval of road name, Sunny Vista Drive. Second. Okay, motion is second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the road name, Sunny Vista Drive, road number 3715GK2, off of Bolling Lane.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. This time, I would recognize Mr. David Moose, our compliance and procurement specialist, with a resolution to partner with Yadkin Valley Telephone Membership Corporation for Great Grant Application.
Good evening, commissioners. We, staff are bringing before you a resolution to partner with Yadkin Valley Telephone Membership Co., also known as Yadtail. Most recently, they've changed their name to Ziris. This resolution would authorize Alexander County to partner with them on a Great Grant application to the state to expand broadband internet service in eastern Alexander County. If they receive the award, we would commit to contributing $163,815 towards a match for that expansion work.
All right. Thank you for the information. Anyone have any questions?
I see what our match would be, but how much is the grant for?
I reached out to him, he did not get back to me. I recall in our conversations, though, I think it was around 1.6 million. That figure stands out in my mind, but I'm not sure the exact amount of what the total That figure stands out in my mind, but I'm not sure the exact amount of what the total investment would be.
Okay. So what this will do is help to get the areas that we've not been able to get into, is that?
Correct. So the Great Grant Program, the rules that apply are that private internet providers can partner with local government units to do expansion work in unserved areas which are identified by census tracts. So there are some unserved areas, even with the current broadband expansion program that are not reached currently. So that's, this work would target those areas.
Okay. I know there's a resolution. Would you mind to read that, or is that, do you have a copy?
Sure. So this is a resolution to partner with Yadkin Valley Telephone Membership Corporation, also known as Yadkin Valley, to provide certain county funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, to partner with Yadkin Valley to fund the construction of broadband infrastructure in certain areas of Alexander County. It states whereas broadband service is vital, excuse me, is vital to the economic development of Alexander County, and whereas the American Rescue Plan Act provides funding to Alexander County, which can be used to promote broadband services, and whereas Yadkin Valley as a retail provider of communications services, including the provision of broadband services to portions of Alexander County, and whereas Yadkin Valley intends to apply for a grant under the North Carolina Growing Rural Economies with Access to Technology Act, also known as the GREAT Act, to provide broadband services to identified unserved areas of Alexander County, and whereas Alexander County strongly supports the grant application of Yadkin Valley, and whereas if Yadkin Valley is selected by the North Carolina Broadband Infrastructure Office to receive state fiscal recovery funds for the Alexander County project, then Alexander County will contribute a portion of its ARPA funds, up to one hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, to support the project based on the total amount awarded by the state, and whereas the infrastructure to be completed shall be owned and operated by Yadkin Valley. Now therefore be it resolved by Alexander County Board of Commissioners that Alexander County offers a partnership agreement to Yadkin Valley for the express purpose of supporting Yadkin Valley's GREAT Act application to construct fiber-to-the-home broadband services for specified unserved areas of Alexander County. As agreed upon by the county and Yadkin Valley, should the GREAT grant application be successfully awarded to Yadkin Valley, Alexander County shall contribute their match portion, up to one hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, from the county's ARPA funds to the project, and the broadband services and infrastructure related thereto shall be owned and operated by Yadkin Valley.
All right. Thank you for that. Everyone's heard and had a chance, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the motion with the stated amount of Alexander County matching funds, that that be the most that we'd contribute to that fund for that project. And I think it's a good project, but I want to make sure that it, that money's all that we'll put in for the thing that's always asking for.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? I guess what we're doing is entering into this, if something falls through or whatever, then it's totally.
Then there's no obligation to fund yet. See, it's all contingent upon them successfully receiving a GREAT grant.
Okay. And our part is up to one sixty-three, eight fifteen.
Correct, not to exceed that amount.
Could be less, yeah, just depending on. Okay. All right. Any questions, any commissioners? Okay, entertain the motion to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Just stand still.
I will.
Jordan Knight.
Yeah. Item number four, recognize Mr. David Moose again for our compliance and procurement specialist. And we have an engineering agreement for the Bowman Court Sewer Pump Station.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So also before you tonight is an engineering services agreement for Alexander County to enter into an agreement with McGill Associates, an engineering firm, to provide engineering design and construction administration services for the construction of the Bowman Court Sewer Pump Station and associated force main. This project is funded through an allocation of funds in the state budget. The cost for the engineering services agreement is a hundred fifty-two thousand.
Okay, thank you. Though it's been in our packet, I'm sure everyone's had a chance to look and to read over it. I would make a motion that we approve the agreement for the engineering services for Bowman Court Sewer Pump Station.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any questions from anyone? Any discussion?
Need to get started.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, that money is all coming from the state?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I just wanted to make that clear.
All right. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. French.
All we're doing is working through it.
Correct.
All right. If there's no other discussion or questions, I'd entertain a vote of approval. Raise your right hand. Okay, all in favor. Thank you for that unanimous vote. Okay, and once again, Mr. David Moose for number five, our engineering services agreement for elevated water tank for the Bethlehem Water District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So similar situation. This is an engineering services agreement for Alexander County to contract with West Consultants P L L C as an engineering firm for engineering design and construction administration work for the construction of an elevated water storage tank for the Bethlehem Water District. Just like the last project, this project is also funded through an appropriation in the state budget. The total contract amount is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve that water tank. We've been waiting on that for about ten years. Whenever we get that water tank, it's going to equalize the pressure in the Bethlehem community and give everybody else much, much more better water service, and this is something that we talked about, I know, ten, twelve years ago, that Alexander County needed, and we never had the money to be able to make this happen. And I'm tickled to death that we're finally, after all these years, this is going to happen. I make my motion with pride for Alexander County.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yoder. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion before we vote? It's a good thing, it'll complete that process up there and give us all a little help.
Oh, it's gonna, it's gonna make a big difference, and I think people are gonna be surprised what kind of difference it's going to make, so.
Yes.
It's a good thing that's happening.
Very much so.
Okay. Entertained a vote of approval. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Moose. Moving on to next item, item number six, I'd recognize county manager Rick French for the agreement between Energy United Water Corporation and Alexander County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number six is a proposed agreement between Energy United and Alexander County. It's a four-year agreement selling five, up to five hundred thousand gallons of water per day to Energy United for a dollar fifty per thousand, and the staff would like to recommend that you approve this agreement tonight. If there's any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. French. Any questions?
No. May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this agreement between Energy United Water Corporation and Alexander County, and this is what happens when the government and a private entity can work together to make things better for the citizens of Alexander County. And I think this will be a great project, and will go well to continue to put more and more water lines and have more water coming in Alexander County. And this is another thing that has been talked about for years, and it's finally coming to reality.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Yoder. Water is a good thing.
Oh, yes.
If you run out of it, it's not too good, so we want to keep plenty going, all we can do. Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any other comments, discussions? All in favor, vote raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously, gentlemen. Moving right along, item number seven, Mr. Rick French, once again, for Public Health Week 2022 by the Alexander County Board of Health Commissioners Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a resolution, Public Health Week, and that is April fourth through April the tenth, and it's been designated as National Public Health Week. And staff recommends the approval of the proclamation, or the resolution, I'm sorry, is presented.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the public health.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Public Health Week 2022, with the resolution as stated.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor, vote raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight, Budget Ordinance Amendments seventy-six through eighty-four and Project Budget Ordinance P four, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number seventy-six is to increase the tax office budget for NCDOT fees charged to the county for collecting motor vehicle taxes. Based on the year-to-date fees charged and increases needed to cover the remainder of the budget year, also to increase the garage budget due to price increases for parts and more repairs being done in-house, and to increase the EMS budget for estimated administrative fees to be paid to NCACC for the annual Medicaid cost report. Two years worth of report fees are estimated due to a delay in receiving last year's final report, and that's delays from the NCACC. Also to increase the medical examiner budget due to the increased number of autopsies and death investigations performed, and to reduce the estimated use of fund balance appropriation based on sales tax revenue projections for fiscal year 2022. That's a good thing. Number seventy-seven is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the use of state funds for distribution of the unauthorized substance tax. These special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. The funds will be spent to equip two K-9 officers with kennel, with kennel for videos, I'm sorry, for vehicle, concrete pad, and dog lot leashes and other items for two K-9, two K-9 bloodhounds. Budget Amendment Number seventy-eight is to increase the fire emergency services budget for FEMA public assistant grant funds received to reimburse the county for the cost incurred due to tropical storm ETA in November of 2020. Number seventy-nine is to increase the library budget for donations received and for revised estimates of state aid funds. Number eighty is to increase the cooperative extension budget for additional revenues received. Budget Amendment Number eighty-one is to increase the budget estimate for interest earnings on cash balances of the landfill closure fund. Budget Amendment Number eighty-two is to budget for five thousand dollar payments to Sunny Point Volunteer Fire Department to provide local matching funds for a grant, for a grant the fire department received for a vehicle exhaust system that removes the fire apparatus exhaust fumes from the parking bay. Budget Amendment Number eighty-three is to budget for the estimated expenses to be incurred for fiscal year 2022 from the proposed engineering contract for the Bethlehem Water Tank Project. Budget Amendment Number eighty-four is to budget for the estimated expenses to be incurred for fiscal year 2022 for the proposed engineering contract for the Bowman Court Sewer Pump Station. And then you have the project ordinance, budget ordinance for Alexander County Grant Project Ordinance, Budget Ordinance, Alexander EDC Site Development Project, North Carolina Railroad Company Build Ready Site Grant, and it's for five hundred thousand dollars. And I'll be glad to try to answer any question. And by the way, the five hundred thousand dollars is a total grant coming from the North Carolina Railroad Company.
All right. Thank you, Mr. French. Anyone have questions, comments?
I make a motion that we approve the Budget Amendment seventy-six through eighty-four, along with the Project Budget Ordinance Number P dash four.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. There's no questions or discussion, entertain a vote of approval, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number nine, recognize Mr. Rick French, once again, for board appointments and reappointments, Farmland Preservation V A D Board and Council on Aging.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appoint Tracy Fox for four years to the Farmland Preservation Board, and appoint Peggy Smith for three years to the Council on Aging.
All right. Thank you. Everyone's heard the appointments. Entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the appointment, says Red.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item number ten, County Managers Report, Mr. Rick French, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the, we have received the proposed school budget request for twenty-two, twenty-three, and you have that in your packet. School in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year received seven million, sixty-five thousand and sixty dollars. They requested seven million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That is an increase of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Also in this report is a copy of the sales tax report. And again, glad to report, sales taxes continue to increase. Sales taxes, regular sales taxes increased eight point five percent from the same time last year. The new sales taxes, which is for economic development, public education, and community colleges, increased by almost thirteen and a half percent. Also, we've talked about, I think we talked about this before when the cog made the presentation on the one sixty D, we are required to adopt a Alexander County Comprehensive Plan. In your packet, just for information purposes, tonight is a copy of the agreement the cog has prepared for Alexander County and the cog performing the services to prepare that annual plan from July first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The total amount of the contract is fifty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, and the payment could be spread over two fiscal years. So I just present that to you for information tonight. Let's see, I think there's one other item. There's some information about the soil and water meeting recently attended, and also the, our tenth anniversary of Rocky Face Park will be celebrated on April twenty-third with Rocky Fest, and we're excited about that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Let's, there is any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. French. Those other things, the school and the budget, we'll do that in our budget time.
Yes, sir.
Which we're getting ready to go into our budget, pretty much for the next few months. We'll be having more meetings and things to do that, to make sure that we're staying as true as we can to our budget and, you know, holding costs down as much as we can in this time that we're in. So thank you for that report, Mr. French.
Thank you, sir.
And moving on to our, well, I think you have something.
Yes, Chairman Reese, I've got some information that I want to bring in front of the commissioners and the public. We have a property owner in the county that has approached me that would like to start communication and open dialogue on making some extreme headway on his facility, which would be the old hospital, the twelve or thirteen acres up there in town. May be in some fashion changing ownership, hands of that over to the county in a reduced amount with the hag on a deed or stipulation that that property would be used only for an aquatic center slash gymnasium site for the county. So I want to bring that to everyone's attention, as we do have an individual that has the property that would like to see our county grow and things be provided for our kids and our citizens. So just wanted to advise the board and the public.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Pennant. Good information. We're always trying to look forward, to look to do what we can, you're the best for Alexander County, so we'll be getting back with you on a later date with some more information maybe on that, once we all get together and talk about it. Thank you again, sir. And moving on to our consent agenda, I make a motion to approve it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I think everyone's had time to look at it in our booklets. Is there any questions or discussion about consent agenda? If not, make a motion to, or make a vote of approval, but raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will adjourn to go into closed session per NCGS 143-318-11. At 4, 5, and 6 for Economic Development, Contractual, and Personnel, I make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? All in favor in going into closed session, and we will readjust only for the purpose of adjournment. Raise your right hand. Thank you.